Come on.
I might, I clicked Phyllis. You'll both be in. Click Betty. Come on. Where am I? We're going to be goofy again? What's with Carrie? According. Very new stock. Green. What's happening this time? Yeah, what's going on? There it is.
So I'm just checking that you all can hear me.
I can hear you. I can't hear or see the rest of them. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Phyllis, but I can't hear.
Carrie's sound is off and and visual is off.
Well, I can see everybody, but.
But it's on lanes. It was on lanes and now that's gone. Hey, yeah, what's going on now?
Yeah, so I think it must be something Carrie from your end because I can't hear anything that's happening in the room either.
And now the whole thing is turned off. What's going on? You're there, but I don't have anyone else.
Try view.
Can you hear us now?
For you now, Carrie, but I can't, I still can't hear anyone else. I hear you now, Travis. Yep. I hear you now.
Okay, so now you should be able to let everybody.
Where? There, you're on the screen, a very little, little screen. I'm going, what's going on here?
Serene.
And I can hear you. I'm hearing my phone. I'm gonna turn off my phone and still see if you work.
So can you, can you hear us now, Phyllis?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm gonna hang up.
Okay, good luck.
Okay, so there is.
Okay, well, it'll be here.
There is audio and there is no.
You bet.
The United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Mochler. Packard.
Here.
Smith. Here. Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Approve agenda with the addition of.
Addition of a contract from Microfilm Imaging Systems for the real estate tracker software for the Director of Equalization and the zoning offices.
So moved.
Did we want to also add discussion for Facility Manager? Or is that? Need to be.
If, if you have something for that, Phyllis, we sure can.
Oh, I didn't. There was just a note that we, there was some desire to discuss it for our consultant.
Okay, we'll, we'll put that on the, at the bottom then.
Sounds good.
Okay. So with that addition?
Yeah, move with that addition.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes. Motion passes. Approve amendments.
Move to prove.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. We've got a driveway application for Marty Gilbertson on 313th Street.
I see Rod had said it was good to go.
Yep.
I will move to approve it.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Fuel quotes, gas fuel quote.
Move to approve Vermillion Shop gas quotes, Brunick Services low bid at $3.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes. Oh, Lexi. Are you? Your ad let them.
Thanks. Um, so I have a request for you guys. We have a case, a family and child abuse case pending right now where dad has retained counsel. He's the defendant. Mom has retained counsel for herself and the children. Um, and that person is, I mean, both attorneys are good competent attorneys and so to that end, you know, the children are represented, the children are the victims of the offense, mom is not. And but under Marcy's law, mom does qualify as a victim because she is the parent or guardian or custodian of the children. My concerns have been that there's been. There's been an interest expressed, I think, as interested or concerned about dad's well being as it is the children, and I think it's a potential conflict for this attorney to continue representing both mom and the children. So, under statutes, if children are not otherwise represented in a proceeding, the court can appoint a guardian ad litem to represent their interests. You know, yes, I represent the state and I'm advocating for the safety and well being of the children. But definitely, I would say that the state's desires and wishes as what's best for the children right now are at odds maybe with what moms and dads are as far as people being in the home and those things. So for all those reasons, I made a motion to appoint a guardian ad litem for the children separate and apart from the attorney that mother has retained. The court appropriately asked me who would be paying for such things and that is not contemplated in our public defender contract because because we haven't filed, you know, if there's an abuse and neglect action, a juvenile proceeding, something in that regard, the child wouldn't get representation to that. So my question is, would you all be willing to pay for set expenses? With the understanding, and I would just tell you that I don't know, now I'll ask that those costs be attributed back to dad in the end if he's found guilty of something. But his attorney has already noted that they've, they would object to those costs being assessed back to him because attorney has already been provided and retained. So my question is, would you all be willing to pay for that? If the court were to appoint an additional attorney with the understanding that we may not get that money back?
Do we know roughly how much that money might be?
I don't know. Um, I don't know.
Any idea, any estimate?
I don't know what, you know, some of our last court appointed, I mean, in theory, whoever it is would, wouldn't have to do the amount of legwork that dad would, dad's attorney would do because that's the person who used to find the action. Their job and role is to just make sure that the children's best interests are reflected and projected to the court. And very transparently with you guys, the argument on the flip side of this is they are being represented and mom and dad have paid for somebody to do that. And this attorney that mom has found and hired and retained is doing that. I just think that there's been, from my perspective, as much negotiation on that, that case with the victim's attorney, if you will, then as there has been with, with dads, you know, wanting dad back in the house, wanting the no contact lifted, those types of things, and I don't think that that's necessarily in the children's best interest.
So if I understand this right, the mother has an attorney for herself and the children.
Correct.
And the father's got an attorney.
Correct.
And he's the one that's being pretty much prosecuted.
Yes.
So your thoughts are, why, I guess I don't understand the conflict. You said there was a conflict.
So, um, the children's attorney is asking and advocating their wishes and mother's wishes that dad be allowed back in the home, that the no contact with the primary target child who was strangled at age 13. That dad be like, this was an isolated incident misunderstanding and, and I'm coming at this from the abundance of caution from a public safety standpoint. So, um, and I, and it's just, it's, it's difficult for me when the children's attorney is advocating for the perpetrator to be reunited with the victim in this fashion. But but victims wishes many times in, say, domestic violence cases are at odds with what I request as well. So, you know, she is advocating for what the children have written in letters and things in that regard at this point in time. And so that's why I want to be very transparent with you guys that there is someone who has been retained, who is advocating right now for the children's wishes.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with Alexis that, you know, this is, this is one of those better be safe than sorry cases. And, you know, there is, there is this dynamic, right, between victims and perpetrators and domestic violence cases and you know, sometimes the children can, can get lost in, in the midst of that and, and they're also in a terrible position having to agree with either mom or dad or, in this case, both. And, uh, yeah, it, um, I, I, I would move approval.
I would second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So this would be a total third attorney?
Well, I mean, I guess you could say this would be a fourth attorney. That the county may end up eating expenses on.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mochler.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Lexi?
No.
Drew. Um, so it's not a Kevin Meyer zoning issue. It's, uh,
uh, somebody on the commission last time asked that we added, there's been, we just picked the application out. Yeah, there's no new changes with that. It's gonna be, I think it's on the 16th of November is the hearing, the planning zoning joint hearing over at City Hall at 5:30. And other than that, there's been no, no changes on that.
And that's the city planning commission or the joint?
It's the joint.
Okay.
Yeah. County and city.
Sixteenth. 5:30, is that what you said?
City Hall.
So do you have anything else?
Uh, unless we talk jurisdiction and, yeah, and then the contract for microphone.
Is there any reason for us to worry about being over, overrepresented, represented if, if too many commissioners show up there?
Oh, at the planning and zoning?
At this, yeah, at this joint meeting.
You'd be in the audience.
I guess it would mainly be that have Carrie make it so we, it'd be possible so that the public would know that it'd be possible for a quorum to show up.
I can do that. I posted notice for tomorrow night's meeting for the facility committee too, so I mean, it's, I can post the notice and that way if there is more than two of you, then it'll be fine.
Yeah, just post it as possible quorum. No decisions will be made.
And I think if it's a routine board meeting of another entity of the county, that regular notice of that entity probably should suffice. I, I think that because it's a joint jurisdiction meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think.
But not of the commissioners or city council. It's planning to do planning board.
Okay.
I mean, anybody can speak, but they won't. City council or commissioners won't have any authority or say.
No. And I realize that and I, my role would be mainly is the interested property owner in joint jurisdiction.
Yep.
As a mouse in the corner and I'm not prone to jumping up in outrage.
I just, are you reserving a little bit?
I seem to think from memory, there's something about if, as commissioners, you spoke at that meeting, that might preclude you from speaking at the county commission meeting or having a
Not a conflict?
Yeah, I don't know what that, it's just something from somewhere else.
In, in, as I recall, I think you're right in that, that if, if a person puts a, puts input into that meeting as a reviewing board or I guess that's what it is. It's a reviewing board. Yeah, it'd be probably not, maybe not restricted, but decrease a person's some, yeah, power to act as an impartial judge in that reviewing board.
Yeah, I think I see members, we, we talked about that sometime too, once before.
Possibly, I mean, somebody might think it falls under the conflict of interest, but there's no financial gain. And that's usually where that conflict of interest comes in, monetarily benefit, but.
I'll come sit aside to take and not let you get up.
Well, I mean, he, he should have just as much right to speak whichever direction he wants and and then since he sits here, should be able to, and that's why you're here. That's part of your job, just just because where you live shouldn't preclude you from.
Thank you.
Anything else for joint? Uh, do you want to talk about or?
Yeah, I, we want to have this in executive section.
No, we can do it right now.
Okay. Uh, last meeting, I was asked to find out what would go in if the city extended their subdivision ordinance, if we got out of joint jurisdiction and the city extended their subdivision ordinance, the three miles out or whatever, uh, what that would all entail. And so to go to kind of by law, 11, 2, 1, parentheses, 8, uh, or 7, excuse me. Subdivision ordinance, any ordinance adopted by the board regularly, the subdivision of land is right coordination of streets with other subdivisions and the make tree plan adequate areas set aside for public use, water and sanitation facilities, drainage and flood control and conformity with the comprehensive plan. AKA streets utility drainage. What gives me pause is that we're hard about the comprehensive plan. As a city right now, there are two comprehensive plans covering joint jurisdiction. The joint jurisdiction comprehensive plan and the city comprehensive plan. Uh, we tried to de-conflict those two this spring. We didn't get anywhere with that. So the city could use its comprehensive plan theoretically to deny any plat. They didn't want, um, for anything to happen in that new area, that three mile area.
If it's gotta be platted.
What's a, if it has.
If it has to be.
Yeah, yeah. And now if you're a business trying to start, you're gonna need a bank.
Let's start it down.
Let's start it down, yeah.
Or they need 40 acres.
Maybe even if it's on a 40, they're probably gonna want to platter off. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, but that's, that would be the only, and I don't know how what the extent of using the comprehensive plan to deny a plat would be, that'd be.
Pretty tough since it's just a guideline to write the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So.
It is.
It is, but the city doesn't use it like that.
I know.
So is, do I understand what you're saying is that in the joint jurisdiction plan or joint jurisdiction area that the city plan, comprehensive plan can, can be applied, the joint jurisdiction plan can be applied? What about the county plan?
Nope, county does not extend into the, into the new, into the current joint jurisdiction zoning area. We could extend the county comprehensive plan into the new area. We could follow it, but the city wouldn't have to.
Comprehensive plan isn't supposed to be used on the joint jurisdiction. That was part of the agreement. It was, that's why there's comprehensive, a joint jurisdiction comprehensive plan. Not this one, and if it doesn't fit our needs, we'll bring whatever we need to, yeah. I mean, otherwise you wouldn't have written a comprehensive plan for that joint jurisdiction area.
So if we get out, understand this, a three mile area, they would still have plotting rights. And so they could deny or prove one, one way or the other. We, but otherwise we would have control of that three mile area.
Oh, yeah.
For zoning, we'd have control of it.
Building, building permits.
CUPs, rezones, variances, building permits, inspections.
Everything except subdivision and.
Subdivision planning and comprehensive. Will a comprehensive plan be both?
So comprehensive plan will only follow for the subdivision and.
Right, right, right.
Not, not for our zoning.
So it would give a brighter line as to what, what responsibilities our city and what responsibilities our county. It would make that line a brighter.
It would take a lot of conflict.
Sharper. Yeah.
Because the plotting and zoning or the plotting and there's joint or there subdivision rules, they're already written. That, that should be pretty black and white. Nothing says it can't change them. But there shouldn't be any gray area in your subdivision ordinance to define some way to stop something or allow it.
So we'd have control of it except for subdivisions and imply.
Yeah, it'd be pretty clearly defined roles. Who has this, who has that?
And they have that now. You know, we're not giving them anything.
No, I know.
It could be better for not only the, the, not only the county, I think, you know, we've been taking kind of a narrow view that what's, what's right is the, for the county as a government. The, the broader view of what's right for the citizens of the county and the city essentially, and especially those in jurist, joint jurisdiction could be better without the joint jurisdiction ordinance. Especially those within that owning property within that, that gray zone now or I guess it's, I'd like to think of it as that you've got two colors laid on top of each other and it turns out to be super black.
Yeah.
Yep.
So the original idea behind joint jurisdiction is always to anticipate ways that a city might grow and to ensure that what's in that joint jurisdiction zone uh, you know, complies with, with city rules. And I, I think that's why it's written the way it is. You know, I, I, I think it makes a lot of sense as we begin to move along to engage the city in discussions as well. Because, you know, it, it may not be a, uh, you know, joint jurisdiction or nothing. Situation, it could be that joint jurisdiction, you know, mi- might be recrafted in such a way that it doesn't pose such a burden on, you know, on citizens who wish to develop there. So it, you know, and I, you know, I, I just think that we're at the point in this discussion where we really need to bring, to bring the city into, into the discussion and, um, you know, see. And um, you know, see, see what's, see what's possible working together.
We've been doing that for two years, Betty. That's, that's how we got to where we're at today. Having those discussions with them. They're not willing to give anything.
I, I agree with you, Betty, that that's the purpose of, of joint jurisdiction uh. Planning and zoning in general. It. For one reason or another, it just hasn't been working smoothly like it ought to. So, yes, it'd be best if we could retain. Joint jurisdiction in some form, but it's just not working at this point. And it hasn't been working uh, despite. A couple of years at least in negotiations, uh. We're hitting an impasse and sometimes. An impasse is what's required to uh. Resolve big issues.
Where does all of this? Does the city comp plan or new comp plan still contain? The corridor along Route fifty to the east?
As a future green space?
Yes.
Was it green space or was it residential?
What do you mean a future greens?
Uh, I've got it labeled as, as one mile out as, as residential. And two miles out as urban reserve. And then there's some other language in their comprehensive plan about any development on there must be uh aesthetically pleasing. Uh, in our discussions with the city over the last two years. They've, they've said they want to maintain that as the scenic entryway. All five miles of it. As a scenic entryway to the city of Vermillion. They won't write that last part down. They wouldn't dare write that down, but they have said that in meetings.
Will. Something to think about. We'll see how the sixteenth goes also.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, Drew, what would be your suggestion? Do you think we should get out?
Put you on the spot, buddy.
I would be enthusiastic about it.
Okay.
How the city would react, I can't.
Right.
Say, that's the thing that gives me pause every time we've had this discussion.
Yeah.
Enthusiasm, but. Still a lot of caution.
And that's kind of where I feel too, same way, way. I'd like, I'd like to get along, like Betty said, work with them, but. Getting to the point that we have been. I don't know how many years since I've been on here. It seems like we've had button up heads against them every time you turn around.
And even when you're on the city planning zone.
We were button heads. Yes, I know. So it's been a long time.
What was the issue on, when you were on the city side? What was the issue there? Why would be more buddy heads?
I think it was more or less they wanted the control, the city wants control of the growth. I, I think that was the big deal about it. You know, that's what I always gathered, that they want to control if what was gonna have happen in that, those areas. You know, more so to have the city grow. They wanted to control what was gonna go where.
Right. Which.
Doesn't happen like that.
Yeah, I know.
In theory it does. In reality, that's not what happens.
Yeah.
No, but I think that was the whole thing. Well, at least that's what I gather. Was usually the talk. You know. And the green thing you're talking about. Every time we hit into anything, anytime we even approved anything when I was on the city about. Uh, even apartment buildings. The big thing was always, were, were they gonna have any green grass and on these, on this apartment building? Like, that was more important than having a parking lot for the cars to park. That was always my thoughts. And I always thought. You know, that's important, but. Kind of nice to have a place to get these cars off the street too.
Right.
So.
What, moving on.
Okay.
Um, the. Contract for, was it micro image?
Micro.
Do we have that in front of us, Karen?
I don't have a copy of those yet. I think Drew's got a copy of his and I think Ina has a copy of hers.
And we did see a copy of it, so.
Betty and Phyllis have.
No copy.
Okay.
No copies.
Is this anything that can wait till next week so we actually have time to see it?
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, because we've already got the, the software and stuff. So, I don't know why they send it after the fact. So, I mean, you've already approved that we could get it, so.
With that for the fact, yeah.
Yeah, it's after the fact, so, but.
And I think it's right that we have a tick, take a good look at it to have a chance for all of us to have a, a good look at this.
I'm sure it's pretty much similar to what Lisa has.
I'll, I'll scan it in. Sure.
I'd appreciate that.
It's the same pattern.
Yeah.
Wow, oh, baby, you're so different.
They sure look the same.
They probably are.
Oh. Except for number one station.
Right, you have one station, she has three.
Yeah.
Ina, uh, during our discussion on the. Terminal grain issue last week too. Uh, you know, you had said that, that uh. The tax, tax rules just in three, three parts. It's in owner occupied uh.
Egg and non-egg.
And in this case. In the case out there. It should have switched from non-egg to egg at some point.
I believe it is a.
It is egg now, apparently.
I think it always, as far as I can remember, it's been egg as long as I've been here. I, I would have to check, but I don't remember it changing from non-egg.
Really?
I mean, to egg, from egg.
From nineteen seventy-three on, it was never non-egg.
Right, I, I don't remember it not being a.
Tax stat- status would be non-egg for its use as an elevator.
No, um. It's because it's an agricultural entity. They're using, they're making money from agriculture.
Okay.
So then it would be agriculture.
Okay, I'm, I'm coming along now then.
How long has that site been a green elevator? I've got records showing from nineteen sixty-seven.
Yeah, at least, at least seventy-three.
Lisa, it wasn't before that, even in the like forty's, fifty's, does anybody know?
I probably not. I'm sure sixty-seven was when they built Terminal Green.
Okay.
Yeah, well, Terminal Green would have been the first one in there, right?
Yeah.
As far as I know.
Good.
Thank you.
Cause in the, you know, earlier that would have looked more like the elevator floor.
Blowing it up, blowing it off here.
So do you know offhand, we have um, old books, we could look back and see what the value was back in that timeframe? But I, when was it plotted? Do you know? I would have to look. Sixty-seven? Okay. And see if there's, sometimes they wrote notes in those old books.
For that, that's the older subdivision. Before that, it was all this sectional.
What have been using the software for? Uh, anything else we need on this?
Uh, not on that one. And you have. Uh, it's, who him, who does G I S? Is that near on this? What is Arc G I S? Do you know?
It's just a different name of a company. Most everything is Arc G I S. It's just the, the data frame underneath.
So we have a surveyor. Who needs to find a base elevation in the county.
For a field, on a field.
On a FEMA map, so he can do a letter of map amendment.
Okay.
Where to go to get that base elevation.
Can he not get that from the pictometer because it has a lidar?
It's a different layer. For those on the FEMA maps, there's the facelet elevation. That's a different layer than the surface elevation.
Normally a surveyor would go back to one of the uh. U S. Geological survey. Uh, benchmarks. There are probably fifty of them in Clay County.
Sure.
And that's where, when a. Surveyor is having a tough time getting a good base elevation. Normally what he's going to do is to go back to the nearest USGS monument. It's got an exact to the hundredth of a foot uh, elevation. In the center of the plate, it's on the top of the monument.
Yeah.
Those monuments can go out online too, and there's, the monuments are all listed in uh. Uh, out in a government website, and I don't remember the name of it now, but uh. That's normally the best bet is to go back to a monument and then survey for, survey from that.
I may give them your number. And so you can explain that to them.
Okay.
Yeah, cause he's been hounding me about this for almost a year now.
Right, and it's fair and crap.
Oh, okay, fair.
He's trying to get his house out of the floodplain.
Right.
And whatever that surveyor is being able to use. It gets them within feet of whatever they need.
Right.
He's saying the new software gets them within inches.
Yeah.
Apparently Yankton has, Yankton County has. Whatever he's looking for. I don't.
There's a USGS benchmark right. Uh, at uh. Holmes Welding Shop. There's one kind in their front yard.
That would be the best one.
Yeah.
They're on each of these USGS maps. There, there's one on the airport. Uh, at eleven forty where I used to always set my altimeters. Eleven forty, that's exact.
You use altimeters for that?
Oh, yeah. Well, we use, set it in the plane. When you, when you're leaving.
Sure, sure, sure.
We're taking off, you stop at the end of the runway, reset your altimeter.
Sure.
So there's one at the south end of the airport.
Well.
So there are numbers that are close by.
I, I've used an altimeter like him, but we didn't. Benchmark to set it, but yeah.
So is, is it okay, Dick, if I tell Farren to have his surveyor contact you?
Sure, sure.
I've got the map later, but I don't have the software to run it and.
Well, he must have something to be able to go off of.
From a bench.
Surveyor.
Yeah, yeah, it's the, uh, it's called the U S Coast and Geodetic Survey is what the name of the thing is. In fact, Inside Center at USG or at the South Dakota Survey, there's a uh. Uh, list of all the. Ben- benchmarks in South Dakota.
Perfect. I don't have anything else for you guys. Does anybody have? Thank you. Uh, contract for ARPA fund advisory.
This isn't so much a contract for us, but the Association of County Officials has signed a contract with Ida Bailey in Sioux Falls to advise on the expenditures of the ARPA funds um, as to what's allowable and, and what's not. Um, and so they've kind of created a pool for counties that want to join that. So it's mainly um, an approval of the two thousand dollar expenditure to join the pool if we wish to do that.
What's our risk?
Well, our, our risk if we don't join is not having as much guidance on how to spend those funds. Um. You know, i- if we do join, we've got that extra help, so I think it's more of a benefit than a risk.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a small cost to reduce risk. I, I guess my question is more to. How confident are you that we're, we're within uh, that we won't have to pay a bunch of this money back?
Uh, as far as the H pack, I'm fairly confident. If we start to get into other things, I don't know. I mean, there's almost a hundred and fifty pages worth of rules, and so I think it would be nice to have the extra help.
Well, then somebody would be able to fight on her behalf of.
Right.
They followed the rules just like we applied them to everybody else.
Yeah. Yeah, as, as I understand it, the way it sounded in the co- the. The verbiage that we got uh, that Ida Bailey would be mainly uh, there to answer questions. We have to ask questions about, about. Our expenditures where we may be less certain about whether it's an approved uh, cost or not, but. I'm uh. I'm fine. I'd move to approve the contract.
I'll second it. I see it as more of an insurance policy. To maybe expand what we can use the funds for.
I guess the more I'm looking at it is that if we, if we were, if we anticipate that we'll be asking no questions. Or unlikely that we'll ask any questions, we're paying two thousand bucks for nothing, but.
There's gotta be some things I think that we're gonna get into that. Could maybe fall in a gray area, somebody needs to answer for us.
So other things that I have seen is that. Some of those. I hate to even mention, but some of those areas that we have not funded, the non-mandated. May be able to fall under this. And if we had better. Advice on that. It would be helpful.
Yeah, then again, it's, you know, there again, it's up to us to ask those questions.
Correct.
So I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith. Yes. Packard.
Yes.
Mopler.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, we're to. Facilities manager. Phyllis, did you have some questions?
Well, didn't we all receive something from? Carrie on that, that our consultant was asking how we wanted to proceed. They have a number of. Candidates and do we want to form a committee to review them or appoint? Couple of commissioners to review or. How do we want to handle it?
Yes, I emailed Carrie back. I suppose we could probably cut this thing off by next. I don't know, next Friday? That's ten days from now.
Yeah, but one thing it uh, might make sense to do um, is to uh, begin to interview people before we cut it off. Um, and I think the reason is because it's possible that you interview everybody and um. Uh, you know, there's nobody in the pool that interests us and we might wanna go out and advertise again, so. I'm not sure we want to close the position until the position's filled.
HR usually directs us to close it. And then, I don't know if there's eight or ten applicants right now.
Really?
There's, yeah, I, I even got another email this morning for, you know, another one or two applicants, so I think we have. Somewhere in the ballpark of ten.
So they usually. We go through them and throw out. The absolute knows. Um. Give HR our feedback on which ones we'd like to. Maybe have her do soft interviews with. It's the way we've done in the past. And then she narrows it down to three or four. That will do. And they usually close it out and say, if we don't find anybody, we'll open them back up. But I thought as far as interview, um, they like to keep it to five. But I thought as far as interview, um, they like to keep it to five. Five interviewers. So I figured Carrie, Andy, Sarah, who's the HR person. Myself and another person. Well, there's somebody else that would like to be part of it.
I think that sounds fine. It sounds a little extreme even at four, so.
Well, I figured the HR person needs to be there.
Yeah, now each one has their role.
Yeah.
I think anymore is, is overkill.
And Andy's going to have to explain to the rest of us how it actually works.
Yeah.
Plus, he's got to have, he needs to explain to that person how the background check needs to go for. For the facilities manager. Once they enter the jail. Because they have to. They have to clear a background check also, so. He needs to, he needs to be able to explain that to them.
I, I think Phyllis is on the right track though. We need to move along with this because we could end up with all. Ten applicants finding another job in the next, next three weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, it was funny, we had. We got like two. And then it sat there at two for quite a while and. Then all of a sudden, I mean, it's been like daily getting.
And some of them are from out of state, so it could be just an unemployment requirement, but. There are some local ones too.
There is some local ones.
Yeah, there's quite a few local ones. Although, I forget what position we were. Hiring for, but there was a person from Los Angeles and it asked if you were willing to relocate. And I mean, they just flat out said no. Why are you applying? Because it's going to be a heck of a community. Yeah.
I have a question though on this. Okay, the facility manager is going to answer to us, correct?
Yes.
Okay. My biggest question here is. This person's going to have to have a lot of skills. As far as I'm concerned. They're going to have people skills, they're going to have to have, able to do maybe some electrical, some plumbing and all this. But. Do we have a probationary period?
Well, we can set one, yeah.
I think we need to.
Because. They might not necessarily have all those little skills, but they need to be able to. Get them wind up and the follow through, you know, that, that's going to be their job. They might have to hire the plumbing or the sheet rock or whatever. We just need somebody who's going to be on top of that stuff.
Right, but at the same token, I still think we need somebody in here that's got some of those skills, so we don't have to hire. Every time there's a, a, the toilet plugs that we can have somebody come in that, that don't have to have a plumber. I think they, they need to have some of those skills. And I guess I want, I want a probationary period. Because this person after six months or whatever we set up for a probationary period, it's not cutting them, let's move on. We need somebody in this position to, to do us a good job.
And that's something we can. Talk to Sarah about on how we would.
I mean.
Set that up.
If we're going to willing to pay him, I don't remember what we said at the price right there at the, the story right now. I don't want to say right hand, so.
I forget.
I do too. And that being said, we want somebody in that position that's doing. That's going to do it. Because otherwise, I mean, it's just a waste of money otherwise.
Right.
That's the way I see it, but. That, I mean, as far as. I mean, I guess uh. I mean. If Phyllis or let, let, that's.
I, I agree with you totally.
If one of you guys want to be on to what, be the fifth one on it, that's fine. I mean, otherwise, I would do it. You know, if you, if you need another person to be on the, the thing, so whatever you guys think. If one of you guys want to do it, that's fine. Uh, otherwise I would do it.
Yeah, everybody want to do it? I mean, everybody, did everybody get the pack, the applications?
I haven't sent them out to everybody yet.
Okay.
I can sure do that.
Yeah, send it out to the commissioners, let them work it over. Especially if there's a absolutely not or yes, we need to look at this person. But yeah, we're going to have to explain. I mean, and that's something when we. Either before we hire the person or after we hire the person, the department heads. Need to meet with this person and, you know. Describe some expectations or maybe, maybe they could give us those recommendations before. So we can at least tell this person, this is what you're going to be expected to do.
Yeah, here's what's important in this office and that's what's important that, in that office.
Well, I mean, it's not, this position isn't just. Fixing stuff. It's, it's the cleaning too. It's making sure that that is done to. The level people expect.
Correct. I mean, I, I hate to bring up El Point again, but you go down there, you walk into that courthouse. That baby is, those floors sparkle. And that is no lie. You walk in there and I, you can't believe how much, it looks nice. I mean, I realize he's working with a little newer building, but I mean, it's same token, it's all on one floor, but. The counters and everything in that place are. Look nice.
Yep. So is, do we want to, when do we want to close? This Friday, next Friday? What are we comfortable with?
I'd say next Friday.
Yeah. You want to let Sarah know that, Karen?
Sure.
You want Carrie to send out the application she has now or wait until next Friday?
I, I'd say the ones we have now, send them out. It's going to be a bit of review and.
Give us a little time to review.
Yeah. And if we get more in between that. You know. They'll have time to.
And I can always. Send out what we get as we get them and then at the end compile them all into one document and send it out again. That way, you know, one doesn't get missed in the shuffle or something.
Sounds good. Thank you, Carrie.
Somebody have anything else? We're to the end of the agenda.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mockler.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Travis always has to remind us. It's as if we want to hang around forever.
Just sitting here.